Get an economy of scale.
Solid eight.
Which is a tertiary benefit.
Like to welcome you this evening to our city council meeting Tuesday, September 4th, For the record, tonight, all city council members are present with the exception of councillor Alan Arnold, who was asked to be excused tonight. We also have members of our staff with us, and we welcome the public with us tonight. Move on. Ask Bart Stevens if he would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
All rise, please. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Tonight, we'd like to take a moment of silence, and I thought it'd be nice. I think the nation lost an American hero this past week, was buried on Sunday. Maybe just reflect on him just for a minute. I think, you know, John McCain was born into a Navy family. He was the son of a four-star admiral. He was a grandson of a four-star admiral. His father and his grandfather were all about ships, the fleet, and him being the maverick, he wanted to be. Went into aviation, he ended up being a fighter pilot. Vietnam. Believe it was his 23rd mission over North Vietnam in an A4 Skyhawk. He said he read an account, said he was diving on downtown Hanoi, and his aircraft was hit with a Russian surface air missile. Took off one of the wings on the right side of his aircraft, took off his right wing, and he went down. The plane went in a spiral. He ended up in a lake there in Hanoi. Went down a couple times to the bottom, kicked himself up, and actually, when he bailed out, he broke both of his arms. I broke, read two accounts, one said his knee, the other said he broke his leg just above his knee, but he was beat up pretty bad during the ejection. There were people waiting for him when he got to the lake. They beat him up pretty severely. I guess one lady had little compassion for him. She gave him some tea, and it kind of stopped the others, but they tossed him in a truck and took him to a prisoner war camp, which he spent for five and a half years of torture and really, really rough time. I've read some accounts of what he experienced in the POW camps, and being the son of those admirals, he was offered an early release, but he didn't accept that. He stayed. He didn't want any preferential treatment, as I understood, and he stayed a few more years than what he would have had to. North Vietnamese won't release him for some political reasons. So, anyway, he was, he probably, each week we, or each council meeting, we take a moment of silence for those that are serving, but he's one example of some that really gave their all and did a lot. You know, I mean, he suffered, and then he come back, and I remember seeing the pictures when he was released. They brought him home, and he walked kind of all bent over, and it's after he was released from the POW camp. But he came back, then he served, what, 35 years in Congress, 31, 35 years, and probably did, depends on your political views, probably did some good things, was involved, ran for president, but I think he's just an example for us, grit and toughness and desire and a love of country, but like to take a moment of silence for John McCain this evening, so we'll now take a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Now move on to our public comment. This is a period of time when you can come forward to the microphone and address the city council, but any concerns or ideas you might have. Just mention no action will actually be taken this evening regarding your comments. It'd be on a future agenda. You'd receive a reply from the staff. Ask you to limit yourself to three minutes, if you would, and state your name when you come to the microphone, so time is yours. Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move on to the mayor's report. I just have, I just have a couple of things tonight, just to mention. This week, Tony DeVino Toyota's celebrating their 30th year anniversary being in Riverdale. Just like to mention that. I know they're doing some celebrating this week, but they've been in Riverdale for a long time, and we appreciate the type of business they are and their accomplishments here and their efforts in the community. On Tuesday, September 11th, that's a week from today, at 10:30 a.m., Eyeglass World is going to have a ribbon cutting. That's a new shop over in Riverdale Town Square. It's right next to Jersey Mike's, east of them, so that'll be open. It's open now, but they will do an official grand opening ribbon cutting on Tuesday 11th, again at 10:30, so you're invited to that, if you like. Okay, on item number three, under presentations, excuse me, item two, our landslide, do you have anything, Mr. Worthing?
Mayor, this time, there's no significant updates in the status of the slide. I do check in with Ben Erickson at the UGS on occasion, and he does come up on a weekly basis to do measurements, but there's no further major updates. We did replace the temporary fence with a permanent fence up there, and we are considering perhaps slating that, so it's not as visible, so we're working on that. It is still, continues to be active. You can see slight cascading of sand material that's coming off of it, so we know that it, obviously, it continues, but it's much at a slower pace, but I don't have anything to report on that item, Mayor.
You have any questions for Mr. Worthing?
Did he say? Yes, yes, sir. Did he say what the water levels were? Does he comment on that? I mean, because it's, if I remember, earlier in the summer, it was getting low, and has this remained low?
It has.
We've actually seen those elevations dropping through the summer months as the hot weather. It's been, the weather's been beneficial to that extent, you know, being dry. Obviously, we're entering into fall coming up here in winter. We may see some movement that the weather would bring upon that area. You know, one thing I have thought about is maybe just having Ben come and spend 10, 15 minutes with you and talk to you about it, see what his thoughts are with the whole council. Some of you perhaps have seen him, some of you haven't. Maybe have him come and do a report as well. It might be beneficial. I could do that. But to answer your question, councillor, in particular, too, elevations of the water, no other than it is on a downward trajectory?
Any others? Move on to item three, under presentations. Presentation and discussing regarding a preliminary draft design of a new roadway roundabout located approximately 1050 West and South Weber Drive. Mr. Worthing?
Mayor, thank you. Council before you, as a discussion item, like to receive input, maybe ideas, suggestions you might have relative to a proposed roundabout at the intersection of 1050 West, Ritter Drive.
Hang on just a second. We don't have any visuals. Would you guys like a copy of the map? Have you seen it?
I've seen it.
You've seen it, both of you? You guys, Chuck, have you seen it?
No.
Do you want one? There's a map you can take.
You want to put it up? Might be able to.
I have eight copies if anybody needs one.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Sherman. Thanks, Scott. Scott Nelson with CEC Engineering. We invited him here tonight. What this is, in 2016, Riverdale was awarded a state transportation congestion mitigation and air quality. Called it a CMAC grant or award. This award is for, to construct a roundabout at that intersection of 1050 West and SR60, which is South Weber Drive. The award is for half a million dollars in CMAC funding, and it's programmed for the year 2022. What this is, is it's a conceptual design. It's not necessarily put in concrete. We've had multiple iterations of the drawing. It was included in your packet, councillor. It does close off that street that's angled there, goes off into the subdevelopment, so we have a four-way instead of a five-way roundabout. But in order to obtain the CMAC funding, the city has to submit an environmental review document on this project, because it is federal funding. The funds are administered through the Wasatch Front Regional Council and UDOT. Working with UDOT Region One Engineers, we've come up with a design that we have in your packet. Some of the gentlemen out here that are here with us tonight have a copy of it. That's probably eight or nine different design concepts that we looked at before presenting this idea to you tonight. We'd like to receive any input or suggestions or ideas from the city council. We would also, in the near future, meet with the property owners around the roundabout or those that would want to come and provide input to us from this preliminary design that we have, this concept design that we have. But basically, we have to have a design concept in place before we can pursue the environmental review document. So that's why I say it's nothing that's, you know, in concrete, people see a line on a piece of paper, and that's not, you know, the definitive thing. It is open for input, changes, alterations, but what we're here tonight is to receive any input from the council on that temporary conceptual design layout that we have in your packet.
Do you have any comments on this design? Mr. Stevens?
Okay. Okay, you're capping or cul-de-sac-ing the, that one, you said, the one area?
1150 West.
1150 going in. Okay, so as I think about it, getting to Golden Spike Park, and I don't know if we've done traffic surveys of who use, you know, the egress in and out of Golden Spike, which is a destination point, and as well as for the residents who live in that area, is to cut through by the school a residential street or come from what is now a five-point area. Okay, and I don't know what the usage is between the two. Is there any other egress or regress to Golden Spike if we cap that up?
So, with the recent design up on the Coleman Farms, we've now opened that up to a full width road, so people coming from the south side could easily come through on that. And then, if you was coming from the north side of Riverdale, you definitely wouldn't go clear to there to come back up. You'd come through the center of the subdivision.
Right.
There's very limited traffic on 1150 on that end. I've sat over there and watched it numerous afternoons, and most of the traffic is farther north than that. We haven't done an actual count as far as vehicles, but it would, the whole reason behind the taking off the leg is a five-way intersection's just not a great design, and it's dangerous.
Right.
So it just takes away one of them points and makes the roundabout actually function a lot better than it would with a five-leg. We can design for a five-leg, it won't function as well. We've seen that in other areas where they've done it and elongated it. So we was trying to put together the best, safest design, and then we also have to work with UDOT on this, since three of the legs on this roundabout are UDOT-owned, so we also have to come up with something they'll accept as well, so.
Yeah, I'm in agreement on the four points, or the four legs, as you put it. I totally agree on that. My, is the access without going through residential areas to get to some of those areas, but you did mention.
They're all residential.
They're all residential.
No matter which, if they go on 1150, that's a residential road. If we bring them around, everything, every access to Golden Spike's going to be residential road.
Okay. Mr. Ellis?
I really like the design that you've come up with. I know when we talked about it earlier.
Your mic's off.
I didn't know how you're going to do a five-point roundabout, but getting rid of that one leg, I think, makes it much more efficient, and we're using less proper, we're taking less property by doing that, so I think it's a great design.
The other thing it should let us do is put the curves in to help slow the traffic down, which is a goal, and it makes more curves in the roundabout, which slows the traffic. If we do five-way, it's going to be more of a straight shot to accommodate that fifth lane.
Mr. Mitchell?
So that was what my question was. I can see kind of some curves as you come in and stuff, and so that's what the point of those are, is to kind of slow, slow them down as they enter.
We don't want them straight shotting in the roundabout, because the ultimate goal is to get down to that 15 miles an hour to keep the roundabout flowing, so we make them make a transition, which should slow them down. That's the goal of that, and we extended the one on 1150 even farther than what we had, trying to accommodate a little more slowdown there.
Mr. Atson?
I'm pretty satisfied with this as a starting point, but as far as the specifics go, I'm curious just to hear what the public comment will be.
For sure, and like Roger said, so with this environmental, we need a footprint. You know, this is the area we're going to be, but all the little details in that, they're not critical right now. It's just, what's your footprint and what's your basic design? You know, we can tweak, we can, as long as we stay in our footprint, we can change that as we go, and we know there'll be changes, but somewhere, we have to start, and if, we just wanted to make sure we was meeting what you guys felt like your needs were on this.
Did you say this has to go back to UDOT or somebody before we set a public meeting?
Yeah, UDOT will have to buy off on it when we start our environmental document. Actually, the environmental review is overseen by UDOT.
Right, but do you have your public meeting before that?
We can, certainly. It's not a problem, but we're looking at it for the environmental review document. They may come back and say, well, you can't put that there, you can't do this or that, which may change the design.
I see. So they haven't.
Yeah, we may go, we may go before the public and say, this is what it is, and then the environmental comes back and says, well, you need to change this or that. We'd like to.
Then you'd have to do it again, go around. Okay, Mr. Mitchell?
And that would be a little bit of a hassle to have to do that meeting again, but I know, I know there's people that are excited about it, and people that aren't that excited about it, and I want to get their input on it, and one thing, I think, I think the city gets into this, and just government gets into it a lot of times, is you, you go so far down the road, and yeah, we get it, and we get UDOT to sign off on it and everything, and then we take it to the public and say, hey, what do you think? And they think, well, I don't know, and you say, well, sorry, UDOT's already said that's what they're doing, and so even if we had to have two public meetings, I think, I think it's important to get a lot of public input and let them be heard and feel like they're heard, and then if UDOT makes us change it, well, then we can say, hey, you know, we did our best with what you wanted, but.
It will be in conjunction, so it'll all be part of this environmental review. We will have an open house during it, and there will be nothing set in stone before we have the open house, and then even after the environmental review, that will not be final approval from UDOT. There will still be their final approval, so they'll weigh in way before we have final approval from UDOT. That's my understanding. Is that not correct, Roger?
Yeah, I think a big part of it is meeting, obviously, with individual landowners that are around that area, that are adjacent. There's a couple of them that are here this evening. Talk to them, get their ideas, their inputs, and then move forward. I think that's the critical part, is the landowners that are adjacent, right there, you know, that are right within the area of that circle. But that's a big part of it, is public input. Part of the requirement Sean mentioned in the environmental review is that you do have hearings, so looking forward to them.
Do we have a timeline on what we're looking at, when the money, grant money will become available, or?
I don't, councillor Ellis. It is programmed for 2022. When I say programmed, that's when it's available. With CMAC funding, what happens often is is that there are other agencies or other entities that have applied and been awarded CMAC money, but they're not yet ready, and so every year, there's a pool of money that's left over that can be reprogrammed or advanced ahead of its normally award date. So what we're trying to do is hopefully move it up by 2020, 2021, somewhere in there.
Any other questions?
Do you, do you like the four-way concept?
I would like to comment. It's not a question. I do. I like the concept. I, I like what you've presented, and to move forward on that, yes. And yes, to the four-way v. five-way, yes.
Can we set a timer, or be, just go ahead and look for a time for public meeting, public input, or you do that with the?
We could do it in conjunction with the environmental review.
Do that?
Yeah. I'm glad there's some residents here that have seen it. You probably saw it advertised on our website.
I've seen it a little while ago.
Good, because they're right there. They're going to have to deal with it. They deal with the intersection that's there now, and you know, that road is becoming busier and busier. You see the changes in land use all around there, whether it's in South Weber, I don't know if you've been up South Weber Drive lately and seen all the new subdivisions that are going in and around that city, around their 1050 area. You see developments that are occurring in Yunta City or the Yunta Highlands, even in Leighton. These people get on 89, come down South Weber Drive, hit the commercial area in Riverdale City. So you have changing land uses to the east of us, and then obviously, we have changing land uses here alone on 1050. You see the school activity that's there, the motor view is there. Our 1500 West is dramatically different than it was three, four years ago, and so you see uses there, the Coleman property now being developed for a subdivision. All these increased traffic demands in this area are going to place increased demand traffic on this intersection. We're moving it forward, hopefully, in preparation for those people that will be driving through there. People that live there are going to see that. We believe, when you look at a roundabout, that it's a much better way to move traffic through an intersection. It's safer. You don't have the collision points that you have in a semi-four. A semi-four collision, if you think about it, typically are broadsides, and so it's a much safer means to move vehicles through an intersection point at a slower speed, because if you're a motorist, you have to negotiate or navigate that radius. You can't just fly around the corner, you got to enter into it, negotiate the radius, and come back out, whatever side you want to go out of, and so it's much safer, so you end up with four collision points versus, you know, 32 in a semi-four, and those 32 are much more dramatic, because you have cars intersecting broadsides, whereas in a roundabout, you don't experience that. Much safer way to move vehicles through that intersection point. And of course, with the CMAC congestion mitigation, you create less air pollution with a roundabout. The car doesn't sit there and idle, nor do you accelerate, step on the gas and fly through there, extruding more pollutants into the air, so that's, that's why we went after CMAC money. I was iffy if we were going to be awarded that back in 2016, but they did award it, especially on a UDOT right-of-way. That's probably a little bit surprising, but we did receive that grant award of that $500,000. Hopefully, that'll be put to good use. Thanks for your input, council.
Mayor? Go ahead, Sean.
The other thing, we're always talking traffic over there. The other thing we forget is we have pedestrians there, and if you notice on the roundabout design, we've made refuge islands in the islands, so pedestrian technically only has to cross half the road at a time and can stand in a safe zone, kind of in the middle. So we're getting more pedestrian traffic over there as we increase the sidewalk connectivity over there and that, so the other thing to remember is, you know, we're trying to improve pedestrian flow, too, and I think the roundabout helps that way more than a road that's a wide-open, you know, 30, 35 mile an hour road, so if you see something on the pedestrian, you think about that side of it, too, as we go forward, because we are moving pedestrians as well.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. All right, moving on to item number four, under presentations and reports, is the discussion regarding a proposed addition to Title VIII regarding the transfer of water rights from new developments. Mr. Worthing?
Thank you, Mayor. As I, as I explained up in our work session, councillor, this is kind of a two-part issue. We're currently working with Weaver Basin Water Conservancy District on an agreement where as we can utilize what we call surface water rights via a treated method. In essence, the city has multiple shares in various ditches or canals, Davis and Weber being one, Weber Water Users, Riverdale Ditch Company, et cetera. These shares have historically not been utilized by the city, and we would like to utilize those in a way that can be treated, and we can receive benefit from that through the Weaver Basin Water delivery or through our culinary water system. That's one part, so we're working on an agreement that would help us to utilize those unused water shares or surface water shares in these various ditch companies. The other part is to look at what we are currently doing in the city relative to new development, and this is a resource that could help us in that endeavor with the first part. In other words, if a developer comes in, has 10, 15 acres to develop, we would like to capture the water that's, has historically been used on that property or that is not used and require the developer to go obtain water for his development impact upon the city. And so in other words, if he brings in 40 homes, like in the Coleman Development here recently, we have 40 additional sinks, 40 additional tubs, toilets to deal with, that's an impact upon our culinary water system and our culinary water fund, and what we're looking to do is seeing if the developer can bring water to the city to help alleviate that impact. So in essence, this would be an exaction upon him that would utilize water that he could bring to the table into our culinary water system. This is the first time you've seen it. We get that. We'd like to receive your input, your direction. If it's something you don't want to do, that's fine. We're bringing it forward for your, your first reading, I guess, if you will, and input, if you have any input and direction for us tonight.
Mr. Mitchell?
I don't know a ton about water rights. Is it going to be difficult to obtain? Like you said, like five shares or whatever, or enough for however many acres, like, is it going to be prohibitive to even do developments?
It could be.
Depends on if there's water historically on the property? So, most of the larger properties have water on them, and that's the goal. Somebody that comes in that has a place that was never watered, it may be harder. They might have to look around a little bit, but there's other things they can do, you know, as far as buying from and transferring water rights, just like we're trying to do right now. On the Bench Canal, we need to make a change of diversion, so they may have to get a water share somewhere else and make a change of diversion to it. This year, there was shares sold on the Bench Canal. They sold quite a few shares on the Bench Canal, and there's still shares out there that I think are for sale, but there's really nobody buying them, because there's not the farm ground for them right now. The other area to keep in concern with this is, right now, South Weber don't develop because of the agreement with Hill Air Force Base, but if that ever does, there's huge pieces of property out there that have water rights associated with them that this could come into play on, and before, we never knew of a beneficial way to use this water, but now with working with Weber Basin and finding new ways to use the water, before, we was just holding water that we've held forever. Now we can see the light in the tunnel, and we've said this before, you know, I've always thought we was going to drill out of the well, and I think with these new things, I... And I think with these new things, I, that's going to be my least favorite idea, honestly. I don't think it's beneficial for a city the size of Riverdale to try and maintain two wells. They're just too cost prohibitive. I mean, and, and they're a gamble. And this, stuff like this can help us get around maintaining two wells forever.
I like it. I think it's, it's a creative solution and, and it would be a shame to lose all those. And you probably have water rights. And, and I think, I think my grandparents' property had some water rights on it. And I don't know what happened to them when they developed that. It's just gone, you know, like.
Yeah, where are they?
Where are they? And, and so, no, I, I like it. I, I don't understand it completely. Like I worry, I don't want it to be negative, you know, on the residents. But at the same time, I think, I think it might be a way to recoup some of this water and not just lose it if, if a big agricultural piece develops, we should hang on to those, so.
Was that their water rights on your grandparents? Was that Riverdale Bench Canal?
That would have been Bench Canal water.
You could talk to Max Patters and he might can tell you what had happened to it. Might still be there.
Yeah, everything that I know of on that side of Riverdale's Bench Canal, the residents on the south side of town use Davis Weaver too, so they're mixed. But everything on that side, maybe Brent knows different. He's more, he's the irrigation expert around here, but.
Or Davis Weaver.
Yeah.
I think it's creative.
I used to have a share there on our property, Riverdale Bench Canal. We didn't use it, so I sold it back to them, but that's probably who it is.
Yeah.
Just down the street, came off that canal that went through there, that ditch.
I like it. We, we don't have any impact fees on the water or anything like that. And if this saves the city from drilling a well and maintaining a well forever, somebody's profiting on these water shares somewhere. Why not keep Riverdale whole? I mean, they're, they're using that water when they come in to water their lawns. And we might have to look at a way to get, to provide shares or somehow find shares for a developer that doesn't have them. Maybe that's another part of this.
You know, Councilor Mitchell, it can be prohibitive in some cases, you know, especially if the land hasn't been irrigated for a long period of time and those shares are unknown to the owner, the property owner, where they may be or what happened to them. There are multiple water sources that can be looked at, whether it's Riverdale Ditch, Weber, Weber Water Users. Davis and Weber seems to be the most expensive per share, roughly six acre feet per share of water that you could find in it. I think they go to, onto a half a share that you could buy.
Right.
Which would be, you know, three acre feet per acre. They are out there. You can find them. I know folks up in Summit County, were looking for a lot of Davis and Weber water several years ago and they probably still are. And it really, if you understand how to take that water out of a surface right and turn it into a, you know, a treatable water source for the city, that could be a great resource for us. Because right now, a great example is the Coleman Farm. What happened to that water? Who knows? I don't know if the family kept it, if they still have it, if they sold it. But it would be nice if the developer goes in there and says, hey, we'd like to buy your land to make a development and go through the city process. Oh, and by the way, we also would like to have the water that goes with it. And maybe there's a discounted rate on the land if the water goes with it. Or, you know, how that negotiation that goes between the property owner and, and a developer, that's really their rodeo. But if the developer knows upfront, hey, I need to bring three acre feet of water per acre that I developed to the city of Riverdale, that really is a big help for us down the road. That's kind of what we're looking at to do with this ordinance.
If I could, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Stevens.
I think I have a little bit of an understanding of this. Now, you, you keep talking, or just as an example, you're using residential, but commercial is, is kind of where I see future development in the city happening. And with, whether it's commercial or residential, from my, from what my limited knowledge, outside water uses, uses more than inside water use. And so, you know, meaning landscape and whatnot, so, or, you know, if you, if you develop a property. That said, you know, you talk about getting it, you know, maybe this, these are treated like carbon credits, you know, in, in that marketplace. I'm, I'm being, I'm being, I've been silly on that, but, actually, I was trying to be sarcastic, but that's another issue. But the point I'm, I'm trying to get to is, is that you're kind of a, maybe I'm overthinking this, is, is, yeah, there's, if there's water associated with the development, I think it's very prudent to be proactive in making that part of the development, absolutely. I think that's, I think that's wise and it's prudent. But when you subscribe usage or potential usage, you're going to have, this is where I, I see some challenges being made. Meaning, okay, is this high density? Is it going to, so is it going to have more usage than a residential? More, more usage than a commercial? You know, that's kind of where it's vague. But anyway, that's just, again, I'm maybe overthinking it.
It kind of goes back to what the state, we kind of based off what the state thinks the usage is per acre. And we're not going to hit everything perfect. You know, we might have a restaurant that come in that's three quarters of an acre that uses a huge quantity inside water. And they'll only have to develop, put in the same amount of shares as somebody smaller. We, to go out and pick and choose like that, it's just kind of a, a base plate that covers, you know, the, hopefully covers the majority.
Say again what they do if they can't come up with the shares?
They would have to buy shares on the open market, you know, usable, shares that are usable to us. So going forward, that would be anything that Weber Basin could use in a treatment plant or that was willing to trade out. They would even consider, in some areas, they have diversions for secondary water. So they might even consider that as beneficial because they could trade us clean water, you know. There's, there's a lot of different things that play into it. And we're, we're new to this game. I'm serious. I mean, we've sat down with these guys a lot this year and really learned a lot about what we can do with our water shares. And I think it's going to be beneficial for Riverdale because it's not, we're not going to be sole sourced to one well anymore. You know, if that well's for some reason contaminated tomorrow, what do we do for water? If Weber Basin has a well gets contaminated tomorrow, they just pull water from here, here, Davis, wherever. It's not as huge a deal. Plus, they treat everything that comes on the surface. It's all treated water. So they take the contaminants out. Where if we have a well that has something in it, do we have to go build a $3 million, $5 million treatment plant to treat one well? That, that's our concern, I think, going forward is, is getting multiple sources and keeping our costs as low as we can.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, what, what's really important is what John, or Sean just indicated. When you drill a well, first of all, it's a real crap shoot, if you will, going down there, knowing what you're going to get. You could get a lot of water and it could be great. You could get a lot of water and it could be contaminated that, with iron. You know, we've been down that rodeo before. But more importantly is, is I don't have three or four more Sean Douglas's out there. I just don't. And so when I put a water well online, it's more work for maintaining that water well if it breaks down and the reliance on that, the maintenance on it. I, I, we're looking for ways where we can avoid putting more and more work on our public work staff. And this is one way that we can really do that. And again, it ties into an agreement with Weber Basin Water that we're working on. But it also ties into, to looking at water shares that we could enhance our culinary water system when developers come in and that they can lessen the impact of their toilets and their washing machines and their hose bibs. And that's what we're after. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, Mr. Ellis?
It's just like the, the West Bench, if that is developed, there are four shares of water that are tied to that property up there. So when, and if the West Bench is developed, if you have that ordinance in place, then that water would stay with the, the land rather than being sold on the open market. So I think it's prudent that we look at doing something like that. You know, you, you look at the Coleman Farms and the land, the water they used to have versus what the West Bench could have if you, you had that ordinance in place.
Anything else? Okay. We'll move on to consent items, two consent items tonight. First consent item is consideration approved the meeting minutes. We have the meeting minutes from July 31st, which was a fire consolidation joint council meeting with Washington Terrace and South Ogden City Councils. We have the August 7th City Council Work Session and the August 7th City Council Regular Session. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, we'll move on to item two. Item two is consideration of ratification of the planning commission election results for Chair and Vice Chair. Commissioner Robert Wingfield was elected as Chair. Commissioner Dave Gailey was elected as Vice Chair. Do you have any questions on that one or comments? Move on then, can we entertain a motion on the consent items?
May I approve the consent items?
Second.
Have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous in favor. Move on to our action items, one action item tonight. Consideration of Ordinance 902 and Ordinance Adopting Current Additions of the Electrical and Abatement of Dangerous Building Codes Providing a Repealer, Severability and an Effective Date. Mr. Brooks.
As I mentioned upstairs, these are just, these are regular occurrences that we bring these updated codes to the council when they're passed. They're national standards that our building inspector uses to enforce building and even demolition of buildings. Those are all covered by these. We only have really one that's an update and that's the electrical code. And we noticed as we were going through that, that the abatement of dangerous building had been removed from the code. So we're putting that back in. So it's all they are, just updates, nothing new, nothing shocking to you guys, so.
Any questions or comments?
Was that, no pun intended with that, shocking?
No, since it is electrical code, no, but it was a good one.
Can we get a motion then on the action item on Ordinance 902?
Make a motion to approve Ordinance 902, adopting current additions of the Electrical and Abatement of Dangerous Building Codes.
Second.
Have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion on the motion? Mrs. Manning, would you pull the council on the ordinance, please?
Councilmember Ellis?
Aye.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Unanimous in favor, thank you. Moving on to the discretionary items. Do we have any discretionary business for this evening? Mr. Ellis?
Just wanted to know if there's an update on Krispy Kreme and all that construction that's going on on Riverdale Road? Quite the project, a lot more involved than I thought.
Yeah, there's a lot going on. With, with the building itself, it's, it's on target for maybe first week November. So that's going on as well as the improvements that the RDA is doing with the utility work. That's what's taking a lot of time. And unfortunately, it's, it's made an impact on the traffic on Riverdale Road. We've had a few accidents there, but I think people are getting used to moving over one lane a little bit. We hope to get that done. They poured their last panel, if you will, in the roadway just, I believe, this morning. So that takes approximately seven to day, 10 days to cure off and then we get that roadway back open. Then they'll go up 500 West with the new utility lines, the, the larger water line and then the new sewer that's going up through there. We'll, we'll stub those off going eastward. We're also doing a lot of work with Rocky Mountain Power on not only the power for Krispy Kreme itself, but for power within that, that whole entire area, which is now stubbed in and ready to go for future development of the remaining parcels that are in there, not only for our property that the RDA owns, but for some other property that's owned by the Brans family down on, that fronts Riverdale Road there. So we're getting ready for that whole area, hopefully to, to move forward quickly. The RDA is active with a couple ideas that are forthcoming on there, so we can bring those to you as well. Just a real quick update, we're working some ideas also on the West Bench area. We have a meeting that we're putting together with Dee Hanson and a couple other brokers that he's invited, that he knows of. I shouldn't say a couple, there's actually four other brokers that we've invited to just a general discussion of that area. So it looks promising. We also met with a landowner up in that area as well, just recently, the mayor and I did. So we have some thoughts relative to the West Bench ideas as well, so that's all I have.
Anything else? Just an update on our proposed CDA for 700 West. Jeff Stevens, Superintendent of Weber School District, came down today. He offered, I got an email from him. He offered to come down and just take a ride with us and look at our area and what we were looking at before we start formal meetings with the school board on approval on that. Brought him down. I went and picked him up, came down and we had a, we had a briefing in our conference room upstairs. Just went over the new layout for the CDA, showed him that. And then we took him in the car. There was, Mike Eggit was in the briefing along with Roger Worthing, Rob Sant, myself, and the four of us, exception, or four of us went with him with the exception of Mike Eggit, who had some other business. But we went out and we drove the entire area, looked at all the different areas that we were proposing for infrastructure help from this school board. And he gave us lots of good ideas. I think it was good and ideas. I think he leaned more toward the concept rather than approving the whole area like they used to in previous times. The, the whole idea now is just ask for approval for what you need. Okay, just something that's going to happen right soon and so we're looking at that. I think it was a good, good meeting. Was with him for about two hours. Said his wife used to be Braden's primary teacher way back when, so. Yep, so anyway, just give you an update on that. That's moving along. It looks like it'll take a little more revision and tweaking before it goes to the school board. And you'll, I'm sure you'll all see that before we do that, so. Any questions on that or comments? With that, need a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Here we have a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Get out by 7:00.
Yeah, I saw your, saw your name on the mailbox.